According to my phone, so let's go ahead and get started. I'll call this meeting of the Edgefield County Council on March 5th, 2024 to order. Appreciate everybody being here. While the chair to my left, your right, looks empty, it's really not. Tiffany Ireland is here. Tiffany, would you please speak up on the phone and make sure we can get her to hear you?
Hi, can you hear me?
I think we can.
Okay.
So there you go. So Tiffany is on the phone. So for the record and for the minute she is here and present and a voting member, we'll ask her vote on all the votes we have to take tonight. All right, with that, we will start with the invocation led by Minister Aretha Eubanks from Chalk Hill Baptist Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you right now, God, first and foremost to say thank you, Lord. Lord, thank you for allowing us to be together this afternoon, God. Right now, I ask that you guide our county council, guide our administration, to fulfill the duties and tasks for what you have put before them today, God. Anoint them from on high, the Lord, and allow our citizens that even when we disagree to still come into agreement with a peaceful ending, God. And I will entrust all this to you, Father, because you've been so good to us. And I forever honor you and praise you. And in Jesus' name I do pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, counsel, for approval of the agenda, I'm going to recommend that we move new business number one and number two, both of which are resolutions, to right after the approval of the minutes. So that's my recommendation. Any objection to that? Hearing none. Is there any other changes we need to make to the agenda tonight? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as I have amended it?
So moved.
Okay, I'm going to say that Mr. Talbert made the motion. I think Dr. Kenyon probably did the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? And Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Okay, thank you. Next is our guest speaker, Robert Benfield, the Director of Insurance Services for the Association of Counties. So I'll call on Mr. Benfield here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, counsel. Appreciate it. It'd be an opportunity to be here tonight with you guys. So when we talk about county government, many times in the news nowadays, we hear negative connotations about government. I want to let you know that there are so many positive things that go in the background that nobody ever sees. It's my pleasure and privilege tonight to recognize you all for doing something that's outstanding. Risk management, by definition, is trying to keep bad stuff from happening. And the goal of a county is to protect your greatest asset, which is your people, then followed up by your resources. When you have a truly successful risk management culture in your county, you're saving lives and you're saving money. And I'm here tonight to recognize you for doing something that's outstanding. We have 41 counties in our workers' comp trust. You've been one of them for many, many years. Every year, we review the loss runs from all our members. How many employees are getting hurt? And we say, okay, you were forecast to have X number of injuries. If you had what you're expected to have, it's called one, your average. If you have more injuries than you're supposed to have, that's not good, and you get penalized for it. But if you have less people getting hurt than you're supposed to, that's a positive. And there's something called an experience modifier, which says, okay, we take that times your premium, which you're paying for your insurance. Well, for the last five years, Edgefield County's experience modifier has been less than one, which means you're saving the taxpayers of your county money. Well, this year was your best year ever. So of our 41 counties in South Carolina, you had the third lowest experience modifier across the state. Your experience modifier this year was a point five eight, which means you had a 42% savings over what you were forecast to have. This year alone, you saved the taxpayers of your county over $140,000. So you're saving lives, having less claims, you're saving the taxpayers of your county money. That is the definition of a truly good risk management program. And I want to thank Leanne Anderson for all her support, but I know she can't do it alone. It takes her, it takes the department heads, it takes the county administrators supporting her, and county council, you all supporting everything that goes together. So this is truly a team effort. And once again, it's my privilege tonight to award Edgefield County with the third best modifier in the state of South Carolina. Man, if you come on up, and guys, if you give them a hand, we're gonna... If you'd like, I'd love to get a picture with you guys so we can post to our website.
So let's all go down there. Sorry, Ms. Ireland, you won't be able to go down there. All right, so next on the agenda, counsel, is a special recognition, the employee of the quarter. I'll call on the administrator to go through that one for us.
Okay, well, we received this employee of the quarter nomination from the probate office, and I would like to read the submittal. It reads, "I would like to nominate Melanie Smith to the Employee Appreciation Committee." Melanie is the associate probate judge and is easily the most knowledgeable associate probate judge in the state. She has been serving in this position for over 25 years. Over these years, Melanie has gained valuable experience that has enabled her to learn the law and how to perform the duties of her office. Melanie has several attributes. First, she is extremely dependable. She is always on time to work, and she does what she says she is going to do. Next, she works extremely well with the public. She knows how to respond to anyone who comes into the office. Many times, the general public are distressed because of the death of a loved one, and sometimes they are rude because they do not know what they need to do or why they need to do it. But Melanie knows how to treat each one with kindness and respect. As I said earlier, Melanie has come to know the law very well, or she knows how to look up the law. This is very valuable to her position. Next, Melanie is our office manager in addition to her other duties. She plans our budget, keeps up with supplies, and all the other duties associated with this position. She is absolutely the best employee that you can expect out of a person.
Well, congratulations, and let's give her a hand. And I'll call on her to come up, please, and counsel, let's go down and do one more picture here.
Y'all give her a hug for me.
Before we leave, I did want to thank Mr. Caddell and the council for starting, recognizing the employees. We have a lot of good employees. I've been around Edgefield all my life, and I know we got a lot of good. I'm glad y'all recognized us. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, counsel, then next is the approval of the minutes from the January 29th, 2024 intergovernmental meeting. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Moody makes the motions. There's a second. And Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? And Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Next are our two resolutions that we moved up from new business. And let me flip to new business. So first, we're going to consider approval of resolution number 23240004, recognizing paramedic Casey Harrell and EMT Brian Davenport for their heroic actions in rescuing four people from a burning vehicle. So I would like counsel to read this for everyone, the... I want to read this resolution so everybody can hear it. Before I read it, if you don't have context here, the resolution might not make sense to you. So let me give you just a few seconds of context. So we normally think about our EMTs and our paramedics and those first responders and everybody like that to rescue people, help people, all those things when they go on these calls, because let's face it, they go on calls to save lives. And they're saving lives every day, so that's not unusual. But what is unusual is what I'm about to read was not a part of their job that day. It was not a call they were on. It was coming back from a lunch and recognizing an issue, and I'm going to read for you here, and responding to that without being called, without being told, without anything, just their own want to do. So let me read this resolution. You'll see what I mean. "A resolution recognizing the accomplishments and works of paramedic Casey Harrell and EMT Brian Davenport. Whereas Edgefield County Council wishes to recognize those persons who have provided distinguished service to Edgefield County. And whereas on January 30th, 2024, EMT Brian Davenport and paramedic Casey Harrell provided lifesaving action. And whereas four individuals, including a small child, were unable to escape a burning vehicle. And whereas due to quick action by Brian and Casey, all individuals were safely extricated from the vehicle before becoming fully engulfed. And whereas the EMS crew was able to prevent further property damage and harm to others. And whereas lives were saved by their heroic actions. Whereas, in the words of EMS Director Garrett Lynn, quote, "Courage, compassion, and service to others are values that Edgefield County EMS delivers to our citizens. Our team is comprised of dedicated and selfless individuals. Brian and Casey are examples of this type of service to others. We are grateful for their commitment to those in need. Now therefore be it resolved by the Edgefield County Council in session duly assembled on the fifth day of March, 2024, that Casey Harrell and Brian Davenport be honored for their bravery, dedication, and tireless service to the citizens of Edgefield County, adopted this fifth day of May, 2024." That is the resolution. Counsel, is there a motion to approve that resolution? Dr. Kenyon made the motion, and Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please raise your hand. All opposed? Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
And the motion passes unanimously. So congratulations first to our recognition. And I'll ask Brian and Casey if you'll come up, and let's all have a picture made together, please. So next on the agenda is the next resolution. That recipient, Luther Beeson, is literally on his way. So with counsel's permission, can we just keep going on the agenda, and when he gets here, stop and do that resolution? Is there any objection? We'll just do that then, so... Okay, so we'll just move on, and he's, like I said, he's on his way. He was running late tonight. So with that, I will move to comments from the public. This is the first public comment section. Did anyone sign up for this session?
No, sir.
Okay. So counsel, hearing no comments from the public in the first session, we'll close that, move to reports. Anything, counsel, any questions or comments on the reports? All right, hearing none. Next is our public hearing. So we have a public hearing tonight on ordinance 2324001 to amend Section 24-286(c)(1) Planning Commission Terms of Office. Is there anyone here to speak on this ordinance for this public hearing? Okay, counsel, hearing none. I will close the public hearing and move to the consent agenda. Long list of appointees and reappointees to this list. Is there anybody that we need to move to new business to discuss? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Talbert makes the motions. There's a second.
Second.
And Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I approve.
So the motion passes unanimously for the consent agenda. Next is old business. And under old business, the first item is the Edgefield County Strategic Vision 2027 First Year Progress Report. The administrator has a presentation for us, so I'm going to turn that over to him.
All right, so I'm going to stand back here so I'm not blocking anyone's view.
I'm not sure that's the right presentation.
Oh, no, it's not.
I don't think you want to give us a 2021 report on audit.
We did run through this yesterday. It was fine. Use the computer and take the presentation.
Glad I brought the thumb drive.
Okay, so last year, we began the process, actually in late 2022, I began the process of putting together a strategic vision, which is a five-year plan. We had meetings with council, and we had a list of goals for the county. I think we had about 10, and council distilled that down to eight. Probably in January or February of last year, council prioritized those goals in order, not so much in importance, but in which items we should address first. And as you notice, as I go through this presentation, you'll see that more action has been accomplished on items one through five than items five through eight. So let us begin. The first goal the council wanted us to address in this five-year term is to enhance emergency medical services. The first point is to determine ways to reduce response times. Under that, we have improved radio communication for EMS. Well, we have a countywide emergency radio system that's being installed now. It will be complete in the next few months. The only holdup is running internet to one of the tower sites that we're going to use. And I understand that by April, they'll be in test mode. We wanted to add a quick response vehicle. We did add that in the summer of 2023. It was approved last budget year, along with two employees. As I understand from our EMS director, it's been very beneficial for the county. That's sort of a stand-in for a fourth ambulance. That's baby steps towards doing that. Based on response times, we needed to determine the most appropriate location for an additional station by using call history. Again, Garrett Lynn, along with our GIS department, did the call volume mapping. And the central hub in this area is actually the industrial park or any area right around it. So we believe that that would be the ideal location for a new headquarters. So following up to that, we needed to study an expansion of facilities. Along with an expansion of facilities, we need to order an additional ambulance to have four in service. It, when we wrote this presentation, it took 18 to 24 months for delivery of an ambulance. And Garrett, it's closer to 36 to 40 months now. It's tough getting a new ambulance. But we have ordered a new one, and we've also ordered a remount. And that is where you're refurbishing an existing ambulance. And that, what does that time frame? Okay, that's about a nine month, six to eight month, okay. So we also needed to identify property for a new substation. And Mosley Architects is working on this now. Counsel voted, I think, in January to approve that. Now, we currently have our substation in one of Merryweather's fire department buildings. And we know that ultimately, with Merryweather's growth, we'll have to add a second ambulance, and to do that, we'll need a new building. We need to develop funding sources for construction of the new substation. We did form a user fee committee to study user fees and impact fees. Councilman Talbert and Councilman Moody are on that committee. And we'll have recommendations very soon. And then construct a new substation if feasible. That's in the future. We know we need to attract and retain paramedics and EMTs. Based on study, implement changes to retain EMS employees. So in 2023, with council's approval, we increased pay grades for paramedics. We wanted to ensure that pay and benefits are competitive with adjacent counties. And I think we're okay with Saluda and McCormick, but Aiken, I believe, puts quite a bit of pressure on us right now. The goal two, support the Edgefield County government workforce. We wanted to implement a step pay program so that all employees have a predictable path of advancement within their pay bands. So there's a 20% difference between the midpoint of your pay band and your minimum point where you're typically hired. We wanted employees to have a vision of the future, you know, not to be working here 10 years, barely making over the minimum, but they would have a progressive pay plan. So we implemented a 2.5% pay increase yearly. And that has been very well received, and I think that's helped with retention. So we wanted to employ a countywide employee evaluation system. I have a rough draft done, and we expect to implement this in May of 2024, just before our cost of living increases would take effect in July. We wanted to establish a merit pay system where the cost of living adjustments an employee receives is scalable based on the evaluation system. We expect this in July 2024. So if council approves a cost of living increase, we would like a portion of that to be driven by the evaluation system. So we wanted to study benefits, and we talked to employees, talked to managers, and talked at length about what would incentivize employees to want to come here, work here, stay here. And one of the big issues is obviously health insurance. Well, the county, with council's approval, last budget year, now pays 100% of individual employee health insurance premiums. And I believe that's made a lot of difference for retention. That probably equates to a 2% pay increase, but I think the psychological part of having your health insurance covered, I think that's made a big deal. We want to expand the employee health fare to increase services, and we did that. We offered additional tests in 2023. But I'll be the first to acknowledge, we have to find a way to increase participation. Participation is a lot lower than we would like it to be. Work on employee morale. So we've implemented an employee of the quarter program, and I think you've heard from the judge that that's well received. We are, in this year's budget, implementing a safety award for at-risk employees. These are our sheriff's office, EMS employees, maintenance employees, roads and bridges, to incentivize, you know, care with your equipment and care at work. We wanted to hold an end-of-the-year employee appreciation lunch, and I think council sort of preempted because before I came, council did something where they gave out a bonus and fed the employees. Well, we want to continue that. That's great for employee morale. And since I've been here, we've done three, I believe. Recognize retiring employees at council meetings. So we do have an employee recognition committee. That is the committee who picks the employee of the quarter out of submittals. They have recommended that any employee retiring with 20 or more years be recognized at council meetings. So we will certainly do that. Goal three, support our fire departments. So council, in last year's budget, approved training stipends for three types of training. We've already held the emergency medical responder training. That was well received. We are currently having firefighter... We are currently having firefighter one certification classes. And of course, when we finish that, we'll move into firefighter level two, and then we'll go back to emergency medical responder. The number of credit hours you get vary from thirty with the first one, I believe, to maybe a hundred seventy-one for the second one, and we incentivize it ten dollars an hour. Fire marshal, um, we wanted to establish the position of an in-house fire marshal using an existing staff member within the building and planning department. Unfortunately, that person has many, many talents, including with tax assessment. So I've had to borrow her to interject into that office. So, so her, um, fire marshal training is, is on hold. If you have a skill in Edgefield County, we will find it and use it. So we, we're doing that right now. And that has put on hold the voluntary audits of each department. But we'll revisit that or in discussion with, um, our building and planning director. We'll identify a different employee to do this training. Grant assistance. Our emergency management, um, manager or director, Foster Crowder, um, has helped solicit grants in support of the fire departments. We'll talk about one later in the agenda. Um, one has been received and one is being applied for now. In addition, he'll assist the fire departments with grant reimbursement and reporting. Four of these departments are purely volunteer departments and they need assistance, um, with those technical skills. Goal four, economic development. First off is property acquisition. Council voted to use ARC funds, ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan funds to obtain additional property in the industrial park. We are pursuing that property now. The current owner, um, is pushing back at selling at the agreed-upon rate, but we're working that out right now. Obtain appraisals for parcels of interest not subject to price limitations. So these are properties around the industrial park that don't have that pre-negotiated price limitation. There was one we identified and we have, um, obtained an appraisal for that and have been negotiating on that property. And see if other county properties would be useful to add to the inventory for industrial sites. That is, is on hold until we can resolve the purchasing of, of the, uh, existing industrial park property. Continue partnerships to provide for industrial or retail growth. We are continuing that. Um, Western South Carolina Economic Development Partnership, Will Williams Group. That is ongoing, it's funded in the budget. Retail strategies, we have funded them for three years and we want to fund them one additional year to see if, if all the work they've done will bear fruit for us this year. And we propose to pay for that out of American Rescue Plan funds. Industrial site development. Explore projects to make the industrial park more appealing to potential industries. And that's just a yearly overview of the park. Is there something we can do to attract industry? One thing is site work to create a building pad that will reduce time of construction for a potential industry. And we wanted to essentially get on the list with the National Guard engineering battalions. They will come in and do this work for you. It, it's a long wait time, um, on the list, but we have to own the property before we can, we can get on that list. And we are really blessed in Edgefield County. There are so many counties out there that say they have an industrial park. They have a piece of land off of a road. We have an access road into the park. We have water, we have sewer, we have storm drainage, and we have a detention pond that is sized for an entire property. So that takes a lot of time off of, of project engineering. So if we could move forward and have a pad, that would make us, you know, that much more desirable. And then continually evaluate the need for road and utility expansion. More and more industries of today are having higher power and water needs. So we'll need to keep an eye on that. Goal five, improve recreation programs. Youth sports. So we, we were looking to expand our offerings. We, we are getting expanded participation just by the growth in the county, but we wanted to see about expanding offerings. And fall, fall girls softball was added in two thousand and twenty-three. As I understand from the recreation director, there was a lot of participation there and we're certainly bringing it back this year. We won't, and we, we have some sort of vague documents towards this, but we want to provide a really good code of conduct to coaches and parents. Every year, we have more and more instances, um, between parents, coaches, officials. And, and we're, we really need to tackle that. On that note, we need to expand staff for the recreation department, and I do have an additional staff member budgeted for this year. We really need to have a staff member at every recreation game, um, that the county holds. We really need to, to do that, to identify problems early on. Identify suitable properties for county ball fields. Well, we have identified Star Road at Rabbit Trail for a rec football field and soccer field and pickleball courts. We needed to establish a funding mechanism for a county park. We have, uh, applied for a land and water conservation fund grant. And I got good news yesterday that it has passed the first and the most difficult hurdle. It's been approved by the National Park Service. So it's really looking good. This is a five hundred thousand dollar grant for that park. And then, as we go forward, we're, we're going to need to develop a county recreation park master plan to see where we need to go beyond what facilities need to be expanded and where we need additional facilities. Adult recreation. Expand opportunities for pickleball in partnership with the town of Edgefield. Pickleball is apparently the, the most popular sport in the world. It seems like, um, you can't have enough pickleball courts. But we did meet with their, the County Pickleball Association. We met with the town of Edgefield and the county is not going to enter into this right now. Where we'll come in is if they actually form leagues and do tournaments and things of that nature. Right now, the town of Edgefield has adequately provided courts, though we have four proposed on our Star Road Rabbit Trail property. And then we'll begin to enter into, you know, possibly setting up tournaments and things of that nature. Expanding some of our athletics into adult recreation. Consider construction of and pursue funding for pickleball courts. Again, those are planned at Star Road and at Rabbit Trail. And if we have funds remaining from our state appropriation, we're looking at possibly putting a couple in at Bettis Park. Consider construction of and pursue funding for indoor usable rental spaces. Now, this was out in the future, and then we found out that the Boy Scouts had, had sort of gone under in Edgefield County. We own the Scout Hut. Um, the Methodist Church leased it for the benefit of the Scouts. They turned it back over to us. Council voted to, to have us improve the facility. We've completely renovated it. A new playground was installed this past week and a shelter will be coming in in about a week, and that will be great rental space. We've had a lot of inquiries already for it. And passive recreation. Explore connecting county-owned property to the Tin Governor's Trail. So the town of Edgefield has applied for a grant to connect the Tin Governor's Trail to our proposed park on Star Road. They own property going up to Star Road. There's a small section that they do not have access through, and I understand they're working, um, to get that access. Um, we have agreed to help them with their match by a sit, our roads and bridges crew assisting with some land clearing, brush clearing for the trail. The proposed Star Road Park also has over a half mile of trail surrounding it that would then tie into the Tin Governor's Trail, and you would have just shy of three miles of contiguous trail there. Explore public interest for connectivity to North Augusta's Greenway Trail. We have not done that yet because we're, we're focused on this, um, part of trail in the town of Edgefield now. Explore construction of a trail in the Merryweather area if connection to the Greenway is not feasible. And again, we have a lot of options here. We have access to a lot of long and broken sections of railroad bed, and, and we will be visiting, um, that soon, but we want to tackle this one in Edgefield first. And partnerships. Explore opportunities for county recreation with the city of North Augusta. And some may be wondering why we would want to do that. Well, the reason it's on the list is North Augusta owns the old North Augusta Golf Course, which is in Edgefield County. It does have old tennis facilities. Um, it has, um, cart paths that could be renovated into walking trails. There are options there. North Augusta just had a master plan done for that. I honestly don't know what's in it. I have a meeting scheduled two weeks from now with North Augusta staff to learn about what their plans are there and see if Edgefield, um, could be or if he, if we even want to be part of that. But it's something to keep in mind. We currently have partnerships with the town of Edgefield using their fields for soccer, basketball and baseball, or their gym for basketball. And with the town of Johnston, that is where our girls softball, um, teams play. So those are valued partnerships and we help with the utilities on those fields. Evaluate the potential for establishing a family YMCA in Edgefield County. And that, that's something that would really benefit this county, but you've got to have some skin in the game for a family Y. You need to offer property or property with utilities. And it's possible that something like that could be done towards the industrial park area. So we're, we're awaiting a property purchase to explore that further. Residential development partners. We hold a joint meeting with county council and the planning commission to maintain effective communication. We've done that each of the past two January. And solicit input from developers and citizens on issues from permitting to development regulations. Our assistant administrator is going to be working on an input forum on our website for citizens, and they will convene a meeting this year with developers. So we want to be heard from both sides and, and, and in a non-confrontational environment. Consider the expansion of highway overlays. The planning commission is considering these overlays right now. So I don't want to get into the details of that. They're, they're exploring expanding highway overlays now, um, not in a broad way. User fees. Explore the u- use of user fees to raise revenue for public safety type services. So there was a committee formed in two thousand and twenty-three and council au- authorized studies, um, last month and the month before. Last month, there was an impact fee study and the month before, user fee studies, um, based on the recommendations of, of that committee. So impact fees are localized fees. Areas of fast growth, one might impose a user fee on building permits to help with, say, a, a, a substation or some type of capital improvement where we need to expand services because of that fast growth. User fees are typically broader, a countywide type thing, like a headquarters building or something that would serve the entire county. So we're exploring those options and much of that revolves around EMS. Implement user fees in areas where necessary. So we are, we again, um, will be looking deeply into those studies over the next couple of months, the results of those, to bring a recommendation to council. And then we do have, um, an issue with a couple of roads out there that belong to private individuals. There are subdivisions now and, and then because of bankruptcy, they're essentially unowned roads with lots of taxpayers living on them. The most important one is Orchard Estates. And we are investigating both a user fee for residents and an impact fee on the developers, and then a county contribution to bring this road up to standards. Solid waste is goal seven, convenience centers. And, and I'll just include all of these together, um, because they all really revolve around the Merryweather Convenience Center, um, the one on Restmaster Lane. And to a lesser extent, the Highway twenty-five South, um, Convenience Center. So we're constantly looking at the expansion needs of these two centers. And what we've, what we've really settled on is that selectively adding staff where needed, um, and then moving into possibly adding operation hours or expanding days open for specific facilities, not countywide, would probably be a, a far more cost-effective way of handling this than expanding the facility itself. And we'll evaluate that yearly during the budget. We're in that process right now. So the funding, evaluate adequacy of current funding, given cost increases from Three Rivers. Well, good news, Three Rivers is not increasing costs this year. And Tri-County solid waste only had a very modest increase. So I'm happy to report that our, our current solid waste fee on the tax bills is adequate right now. We have no plans of, of trying to increase that. So we aren't anywhere near now proposing and implementing a plan to add funding to this. We are, we are in good shape right now. And the final one, and this is the one we've done the less, the least on, and it is county-owned buildings. And to flesh that out, these are buildings that will be vacated, um, due to the construction of the new law enforcement center. Um, the county jail is in disrepair, the existing county jail, and, and honestly, there's nothing to do there but, but to tear it down and decide what to put in its place, perhaps parking. The sheriff's office is structurally sound. It has a large parking area, and I can tell you that voters' registration has their eyes on it because of the parking issue for early voting. The courthouse annex, they're, they're asked, and this is a little building next to the courthouse, just to the left of it. There, there are many parts of that that are not ADA compliant, um, both upstairs and downstairs. So we'll be, we'll be walking through that, um, and evaluating what use we could have for it. And the magistrate's building, which is apparently a former stables for the blacksmith shop across the street. It has non-load-bearing interior walls. It's really suitable for a large, open-air meeting, you know, meeting space, um, or rental space. So we, we initially thought this building looks so large, maybe we can move council chambers there. Well, looks can be deceiving. It's, it's really tall. It's actually by square footage slightly smaller than this building. But it would be a great rental building and it's structurally very sound. Um, we have done preliminary walkthroughs. We have a little informal committee. The assistant administrator and the clerk of court went through the, the courthouse annex part of it. And then, um, Doc and I visited the other buildings to analyze that. So there's a lot of great potential there. We'll, of course, have to explore funding for those, but as they won't be completely vacant until more than halfway through the budget year, this will actually be a, you know, a twenty-five, twenty-six years budget. And that's all I have. If you have any questions?
First, thank you for the update. I appreciate that. Counsel, questions or anything for the administrator? Okay, hearing none? Thank you. Appreciate that update. And there's nothing to vote on, counsel, because again, that's just an update on something we've already passed, so. Counsel, if there's no objection, I would like to go back as we talked about. Uh, Mr. Beeson has arrived. And, uh, so since he's here now, we want to take up, um, what is actually item two under new. we want to take up what is actually item two under new business. This is consideration of approval of Resolution 23240005, recognizing Luther Beeson for his long and distinguished career. And if it's okay, I'd like to read this resolution for everybody so they can hear it. This is a resolution recognizing the accomplishments and works of Luther Beeson. Whereas Edgeville County Council wishes to recognize those persons who have provided distinguished service to Edgeville County. And whereas Luther Beeson began serving the public with military service in 1967, receiving many declarations, including the Legion of Merit and Bronze Star, along with many others. And whereas Luther served Edgeville County as deputy coroner for our citizens for over 30 years, has represented the county's interests with many of our partners, including but not limited to the U.S. Federal Prison and the South Carolina Highway Patrol. And whereas during his service to Edgeville County, he has dedicated countless hours of time to community projects to serve the citizens of this county and partners with the coroner's office and Law Enforcement Officers Association to sponsor youth events and other charities. And whereas through his efforts, a special rescue apparatus was designed and constructed at no cost to our citizens to aid in the rescue of individuals trapped in forested or hard-to-reach areas of our rural county that has become an example being adopted by other rural counties across the state. And whereas, in the words of Edgeville County Sheriff Jody Rowland, "Luther's work has had a direct impact on hundreds of our children and their families and has benefited us all, making Edgeville County a better place to live, work, and raise a family." And in the words of our EMS director, Garrett Lynn, "Luther has built relationships with many organizations and people and continuously uses them to benefit our community and help others." Now therefore be it resolved by the Edgeville County Council in this session duly assembled this fifth day of May 2024 that Luther Beeson be honored for his many years of dedicated and tireless service to the citizens of Edgeville County adopted this fifth day of March 2024. That is the resolution, counsel. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
I make a motion.
I'm gonna let Ms. Ireland make that motion, and the second, Mr. Talbert? Is second it? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I approve.
That means the motion passes unanimously. So let's congratulate Luther Beeson. If you'll come up here, we want to have our picture made with you. All right. Thank you, counsel, for letting us take that out of order. So returning back to old business, we're down to number two. Consideration of approval of the second reading of ordinance number 2324001 to amend section 24286C1 Planning Commission Terms of Office. I'll ask the administrator, or anything else we need to know about this one on second reading?
I have nothing to add. Nothing's changed. Thank you.
Counsel, I'll remind you that this is second reading, and we're going to take up third reading in one week at our budget workshop. So that way, we can do our planning commission appointments and reappointments at the April meeting. So that just allows us to get that done. So, any questions or comments from counsel on this ordinance? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Talbert makes the motion. Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I approve.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Next is new business. We've already taken care of new business number one and new business number two. We moved to new business number three. Consideration of approval to support Northside Fire Department obtaining an American firefighter grant for a new fire truck. I'll ask the administrator if he'll walk us through this one, please.
Thank you. As mentioned in the strategic plan update, our EMA Director Foster Crowder has assisted Northside Fire Department in applying for a grant for a tanker truck. This grant would actually pay 95% of the cost of this truck. And Northside does have the 5% match, but they do not have the 95%. This particular grant requires that the truck be paid for, and they immediately then would send the grant monies to the applicant. So what Northside would require is that the county front them the 95% to pay for this truck, probably for two or three weeks. And of course, we would have a contractual arrangement to protect us there. So we do recommend approval. This would be a big deal for the Northside Fire Department. Thank you.
So one question I have, so they can't get the truck until it's been, we can't get the grant until it's been paid for?
No, no. There would be no money to change hands unless they did get approved for the grant. But if they get it, they would need to immediately send the funds in for the truck.
But if they got it, we would know they have the grant.
That's right. That's right. We are just preempting. We are hoping and anticipating that they will receive the grant. It's looking pretty good. So we need to get this out of the way so we can help.
Questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none. Is there a motion to give approval to do what the administrator has outlined for us there?
Make a motion to approve it.
Mr. Talbert makes the motions. There's a second.
Second.
Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I approve.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, counsel number four. Consideration of approval of the Edgeville County Hazardous Mitigation Plan. Again, I'll turn it over to the administrator for our explanation here.
So the hazard mitigation plan is a plan that's put together by our emergency management department. And this plan outlines existing and potential hazards and the plans to mitigate or respond to those hazards. Having an approved plan does allow the county to apply for mitigation grants. These are primarily FEMA grants, and typically, they're fairly large grant awards if you're fortunate enough to receive them. I'd like to thank EMA Director Crowder for putting this together. I think he did a great job with it because you have to obtain a lot of information from different departments. And this is a good situation for Edgeville County to be in because, again, we have some needs, especially in terms of culverts that are failing in the county. And this will open us up to applying for grants to help us with those. That's all.
Questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the hazard mitigation plan? Dr. Kenyon makes the motions. There's a second. Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I approve.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, number five under new business. Consideration of approval to adjust all previous council-approved sheriff's office starting salaries upward to the next appropriate pay band. So I'll ask the administrator. He'll explain this one, please.
Thank you. As counsel is aware, we participate in a pay band system. This system was structured by Archer. And every county position is assigned a band number, and it has a corresponding minimum midpoint and maximum pay range. Counsel was requested to raise wages in the past for dispatchers, detention officers, and especially deputies, and they did. And that was a very good thing to do. It has had a back-sided consequence, or let me rephrase that. It could have a consequence now that we have a step program. So these officers can be hired in at a higher wage, but they're further along in the band, so it will actually restrict the number of step pay raises that they would get. So we simply want to correspond the band with the actual minimum pay. Essentially, we would raise the grade for the employee. For most employees, it would not result in a pay increase immediately, but it would allow them more room for step increases in the future. So in counsel's wisdom, to try to retain officers by increasing pay, that was good. But we have implemented a new program now with the step pay increases. And we just don't want to punish employees in that way. So we simply recommend moving each employee, based on their wage, to the next available grade. And that's all.
Let me ask one question I have. So by doing this, would it be something we need to continue to do every year, every other year? Or does this kind of solve that problem, you know, going forward?
This completely solves the problem. It puts them in the same band system as every other county employee. It cuts no one's pay. It increases the pay of a few, whereas their pay is slightly under the next band. But it really puts them in a good position to then have step increases going forward. Just for an example, if it stays as is, and I've mentioned that our step system is to get an employee from minimum to midpoint within eight years. We have employees that have only been here two years, but they're almost at the midpoint because they're in the wrong band. They were hired in higher than the band that was sort of pre-council's decision. So we're just trying to put them in the appropriate band. As I said, council gave increases, but they did it without respect to the band because it didn't matter then. We didn't have a step program. But now it matters. And this would allow a new deputy to be hired in at a minimum, which will be slightly at or slightly more than council's pre-approved minimum. And then they could benefit from eight subsequent increases to treat them like every other employee.
Questions or comments from counsel?
So I think my question would be about the band. Would this still bring us up closer to our neighbor or on our?
So I can't answer.
We can't compare with Aiken County. I understand that. When we hire a new deputy, the sheriff hire, hire a new deputy, and we are going to re with this band, right? Will that still keep that person that's going to, that we just hired, in kind of perspective with our neighbor just says salute or a comment? I don't know.
So I can answer that question. This doesn't solve pay equity. Comparing Edgeville County to Aiken County or McCormick County, it doesn't affect that. But we don't want to artificially limit future wage growth because the way it is now, they'll actually fall behind faster. We have to solve the wage issue in Edgeville County, and we're trying with cost of living increases to actually move the bands. But this would actually make it worse if we did not adjust the grades. And we certainly don't want to make it worse. The sheriff does not need for us to make wages worse going forward.
Questions? Any questions or comments? Okay.
I saw to ask one, but it was probably near the same thing what Jacob was going to ask. I clearly understand it now.
Hearing no more comments or questions from counsel then. I'll ask, is there a motion to give approval to this new pay band? All right. Dr. Kenyon makes the motions. There's a second. And Mr. Talbert seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I approve.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Number six under new business. Consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number 2223002 to enter into a multi-county industrial park agreement with Aiken County for project charge. And I'll ask the administrator to tell us about this ordinance, please.
Thank you. So as is typical, project charge is a project code name. And this ordinance is actually to establish a multi-county industrial park with Aiken County. The park will be located in Aiken County. The agreement to create a multi-county industrial park allows for the industry to receive certain incentives from the state and from Aiken County. It does not involve Edgeville County creating a new industrial park, not an actual industrial park, requiring any investment from Edgeville County. But Edgeville County will be the recipient of 1% of the fee in lieu of taxes arrangement that Aiken County reaches with the industry. That's all.
Questions or comments from counsel? Hearing none. Is there a motion to give first reading to ordinance number 2324002?
So move.
Mr. Moody makes the motion. There's a second. And Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I approve.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is number seven under new business. Consideration of approval to award the contract to Bravo Fence in the amount of $58,000 for the construction of one new baseball field fence and replacement of two outfield fences. I'll ask the administrator to tell us about these bids, please.
Thank you. So this fence will be for the baseball field that is under renovation. This is the one on Cut Through Road, which is the dirt road at Bettis Park. It's the ball field that is adjacent to the school. It requires all-new fencing. We've had to demolish the old fencing. It was in disrepair. And this quote, also funds two outfield fences on existing ball fields. Currently, those ball fields have movable fences, and people like to move them and drive on the fields and so forth. So this will solve that problem. The fence will be paid for out of the $800,000 state appropriation that was allocated specifically to Bettis Park. That's all.
Questions or comments from counsel? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to award Bravo Fence this contract? Dr. Kenyon makes the motions. There's a second.
Second.
And Mr. Talbert seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I approve.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, counsel, that ends the new business. I'll move to the second public comment period. I'll ask our clerk. Did anyone sign up for that?
No, sir.
All right, counsel, since there are no one signed up, we'll close that part of the meeting and move to reports from county council members. Does any county council member have any report for tonight?
Yes, I do. I would like to thank the sheriff, Chief Ramy, and investigator Morgan. I was a victim of financial fraud about a few months ago. And I went to Chief Ramy. He put me in touch with investigator. And two months after that, they arrested the person two weeks ago. And she goes to court next Wednesday. So keep your debit cards close to you when you go to Captain D's drive-up window. I just want to thank y'all.
Bad report, but good reporting.
Oh, I even made a jail report, too. So that's pretty good when you make the jail report. And I got my money back. That's right. Great job.
Anything else from counsel on reports? Okay. Hearing none. I'll turn it over to the county administrator for his report.
Thank you. First, I'd like to give an update on four park projects. For Bettis Park, again, Bettis Park, the repairs and the new things that have been installed there are funded by an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar appropriation from the state. We have a, have had a press box completed at the football field. And I didn't realize how impressive that would be to have a press box. Really, it's a scorekeeper's box on a, you know, county recreation football field. But it actually looks really nice. So we're thinking we'll take, you know, the sign with the football team's name and put it on the press box. I think that'll be really neat for the, the kids playing out there. We have a new bathroom building that's almost complete at the baseball field on Cut Through Road. Counsel just approved the fence for that field. Our Roads and Bridges Department regraded that field in preparation for, for grassing. So we're really moving along with that park project and it's, it's looking nice. Scout Park, the new playground, has been installed there and it looks good. We're, we're just anxiously awaiting the shelter and then we can put it out for rentals. And we'll, of course, have a ribbon cutting when that shelter's installed. The Sweetwater Community Center, as you may recall, we received a PARD grant for a playground there. Our Roads and Bridges crew has cleared the lot for the playground. A local timber company is going to bring a cutter out and fill the larger pines safely for us so we can dispose of them. And then we can get to work putting a playground in for the Merryweather community. Joe Simpson, our maintenance employee, has gone out and restrike the parking lot as well and it looks really good. Star Road, our grant application, again, to establish this park, has passed the National Park Services Review with no concerns or edits needed. In addition, all environmental studies and public notice requirements have been done for this park. So we're actually presenting it as a shovel, shovel-ready project, so that will help us there. AT&amp;T received a grant from the South Carolina Broadband Office for Edgefield County. And we are arranging a meeting probably next week to get specifics on their project. We've had a lot of questions for the public and internet's a hot topic right now. So we're looking forward to getting the answers and we can share that with the public. We had thirteen staff members signed up to take office training from Piedmont Tech. We're trying to, to make sure we have, have sharp skills in our, in our, with our employees here. And the first class was offered today. I understand that went very well. And so it's a series of several classes. So we're happy about that. On March twelfth, we'll hold our Budget Workshop at six P.M. During that Budget Workshop, we'll also have Third Reading of the PC Planning Commission Term Changes. And I would like to pass it over to Hart Clark to give a brief radio update.
So on the radios, we are a little bit behind schedule. Two of our tower sites were not prepared for this, this new system. One site didn't have a building. Augusta Communications has remedied that already. And then the site in Trenton on Reynolds Drive has no fiber. They have all the equipment permitting. Everything is ready to go. We've already paid Carolina Connect. Gary Stukesbury with Aiken Electric Co-op is spearheading that for us. So it'll, it'll get done pretty quick. But when that tower site gets plugged in, that's when Augusta Communications can invite their third-party testing agency to come and calibrate the system and make sure that it's actually going to do what it's supposed to do. They have the ability to go ahead and work on the other three towers. But that third-party testing agency, from my understanding, can't actually do its part unless all of the towers are connected and communicating with dispatch. So basically, we have to wait on the fiber crew to finish up that last tower before that can happen. But like I said, I do know that they have all the equipment. I issued all of the final permits today, so they're, they're good to go. We're moving forward. We expect that, that to come finished in a couple of months. And just since I have you, Reg Williams is the one that's gonna go and take those trees down. Y'all, y'all may or may not know him personally, but he does a lot for the county, so if you see him, thank him. And then on the broadband, I attended their, their next batch of funding. I attended their meeting. Again, they're not going to let counties participate directly. So we cannot recommend the use of the funds. We cannot apply for the funds. We cannot really have anything to do with the funds. The ISPs actually have to be the one that applies for the grants. So what we can do like last time is simply write a letter, basically prioritizing up to four ISPs that can apply for the grant. And we can sort of, you know, give them a priority list that these are the ones we want to see get granted the money. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions from Counsel for the Administrator or Assistant Administrator?
Assistant Administrator, what, what role was that in Trenton?
Reynolds.
Reynolds.
Yes.
I thought that was what you said, okay.
Yes, and the fiber's not that far away. It's only a couple of miles away, but they have to work out lease agreements with Dominion and all sorts of things to get the fiber down there. But that will also pick up a few people will have access to fiber who didn't in that area because we are paying to carry it down there.
Questions or comments from Counsel? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, too. We'll move to Chairman's comments and they'll be brief. First, I appreciate the Administrator going over the strategic vision tonight. I mean, it's good for us to ensure we're following what we unanimously agree was important to do for the next several years. So that's appreciated that you're following it and that you are also, of course, giving us an update. As you heard from the Administrator, we've got a Budget Workshop in one week. During the Budget Workshop, we'll hear from the Administrator and the Finance Committee on the recommendations for the Draft Twenty-four, Twenty-five Budget. Just a reminder, no votes will be taken on the budget at this workshop. The workshop is an opportunity for County Council to ask questions or to make proposals to the Administrator before Counsel officially takes up First Reading at the regularly scheduled April meeting. Tonight, Counsel should have received your notebooks with the budget in them. So it's one week from tonight. I would encourage you to study your notebook. And if you have questions, you certainly can ask them before the meeting, anytime during the next week of the Administrator, who'll be happy to answer. The good news is, in addition to a hundred and forty-five pages of the budget, there's also a budget memo that sort of summarizes the major changes, too. So that always helps us get kind of calibrated before we dive into the, the big document. That's all I have tonight, Counsel. There being no other business to conduct, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Dr. Kenyon makes the motion and who said that? Mr. Talbert seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I approve.
Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.